Well, still keep me in line. All right, it's March first. You know what we're going? It's March first. Uh, we call this meeting this March first, twenty twenty-three meeting order. Uh, start off by pledge, Michelle, you want to lead us? You got any exonerations or?
I mean, we approve.
Second, all in favor? Is there anything else? Vouchers, we'll talk a little about the vouchers. And I don't want anybody to take this personal, especially Oak Hill to meet him. One of the reasons that I request, and I think the commission may agree with me, or they may or may not, is the reason we need invoices, because we just, we haven't got the invoices, at least I haven't got the invoices. Mr. Crookshank told me yesterday he would have them early this morning. One reason I like to request invoices, it's not to say whether anybody's stealing or anything, it makes me learn what the fire departments need to operate efficiently. The more I learn about their budget and what they do and don't need, I feel better, it learns how they, it makes me get the inside of what, how a fire department operates. So I mean, I know some people still kind of personal, and I just want everybody to know it's not personal, it's learning the fire departments. So, I didn't get, go ahead.
That is a tremendous amount of work to us in Oak Hill to come up, to provide you with all those invoices. And, and I, as you can see, we spend a lot of money, taking care of that fire department, and all those invoices have already been gone through all of our purchasing process. So, I mean, I know you're trying to learn, it's just, that is, it's a lot of work.
Yes, and I apologize for that, but there is a lady out there, I think I mentioned just to you a couple of months ago, Becky, if you just take the invoices or copy the invoices, I think Mr. Crookshank and Becky can put them, copy them or put them in order and then send them back to you. I don't know, I don't know whether you've talked to him about that or not.
Yeah, we've already had an issue with that, because I had them all in order, I thought, and now they're all messed up, and we filed our original invoices, so.
What about if I come to, to, to you?
Well, I mean, we've started a new process where we're copying them as we go, because, you know, I mean, we have, I can print a check register very easily, I can print the detail of what was paid, it's just not the actual invoice we need to look at. But go through it, if that's the way we have to do it to get our money, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, to learn more about the way the fire departments operate, I, I would like that. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but.
How, how I feel is, I, I mean, I think learning is great too, but every other expense that we have has an invoice attached to it, countywide, and Ruth in her office keep track of every single one of them for the whole county. So, we have to have those. I mean, we're, we are the ones accountable to the taxpayers for this, these expenditures. So even though you guys put it through your process, we're the ones who have to ultimately say, this is okay, these expenditures are okay, you think they're fair, looking at countywide, you know, so that, that's just something we, we have to have. And, and it's something that, you know, I think as a city manager, you know, you're going to want all the invoices for expenses that City of Oak Hill spends, right? And that's kind of where we're coming from on this.
I mean, there's, and there's several questions we have, what if we don't spend the allotment that quarter? Do we lose that amount of money that's been allotted for Oak Hill for the quarter?
There shouldn't be money allotted, it should just be reimbursement for expenses. I mean, are we allotting money?
Well, our contract that we used to have, it always had the amount that we would get each quarter.
Well, I don't think.
Oh, I think that's, yeah, because that's when Fayetteville and Oak Hill were doing quarterly instead of the month.
Well, they just got a lot but amount too.
In general terms, with regard to our budget, and I know Anthony could tell you, Michelle could tell you, we don't penalize people who save money. You know, if you come in and you don't spend all your money, and then you come in next time and you need more money for something else, it really gives you more credibility than less. You know, so it's not one of those budget drills where if we don't spend down this amount, we're not going to get it again, because that, that's just not how we roll. And we'll remember, you know, when we say, okay, Anthony saved us five hundred thousand dollars a year in the jail bill, so of course these people are going to get raises this year, because we've, we've got the money in the budget thanks to him, uh, to do that. And that's a kind of, that's an example of how it works. But, you know, we, you know, if you save, if you manage to save and you come in, you know, two quarters later and you have, you kind of go over, you know, as long as you're getting your fair share according to, you know, your population and things, I don't think there's going to be any issue at all. I mean, it's not like you're really losing any.
And then what happens with the monies that are left over in the fire?
I think it stays, Ruth, I have to correct me on this, it's, yeah, it's not, we, yeah, I don't think it's spent, it can be spent on anything else, other related to fire. Yeah, and that's, and I think that's the way it's always been. There's nothing we've changed or anything. The only thing that we, I think, there was a few little minor changes to the contracts that nobody wanted to sign. So I mean, that's, that's it, that's what I can recall.
And if there are, you know, if they, if we have money that carries over and then, uh, like, this year, there was an expense that all the fire departments had about getting host tests. You know, if there was a surplus left because departments were fiscal, conservative with their money, you know, that's something we could put toward, you know, countywide hose testing or something like that, you know. There are things that would benefit everybody.
So we, it'll be based on our, the actual invoices that we're trying to.
I would like to ask, how detailed are your details on your checks when you send them out?
Well, pretty much, I mean, they, our, the register that I can print or the journal that I print, we put the description of whatever we're buying there. I mean, reference, you know, water, well, um, I mean, utility.
Well, you mentioned the check registry. I, I looked at the check registry last week and then requested the, asked Mr. Crookshank about the invoices, because when I was looking at the check registry, it looked like there was two separate accounts that that money was wrote out of, paid for the fire department. One, it looks like state, I'm, I'm going to ask, one looks like SF, the state fund, and the other one said, uh, S or V?
Some that we pay out of our state insurance fund, and, but that I ran, the report I ran was all out of.
Okay, well, there was a little category, I probably even asked Ruth about it, and that was.
Credit card, we use our credit cards, and then we pay, have to pay the credit card.
Is that would be, is that the state fund credit card? Do you have? Okay.
But we'll, we'll cooperate and do what we have.
And, and we appreciate it, we appreciate it.
And then, I, I don't know if this is the proper time to talk about that contract or not, but there are some things in there that hinder a fire department operation, if you're asking for us to have approval for every expenditure of fifteen hundred dollars. That is, I mean, that, I think is.
Well, it's something we.
Be on the stove, but maybe, I mean, I don't know, if, if you're not trusting your fire teams and your departments, and I know there's a lot that has been going on with our departments, but we have a second oversight in that we're, that all their money comes through us, so they don't ever write a check, they write every check that they have.
Well, that's something we can talk about and come back and talk about. I don't think they've ever come back, and I was supposed to meet with them a few times, but they didn't really come out with the changes that they wanted to do, I don't believe, in, in the last meeting, and that was a while back. But I think I have talked to Ruth and the commission about coming back and talking about that and bringing any questions you have, any questions you want to bring up.
That's one of the main ones that I.
Well, and, and recommendations about what spending limit would be reasonable would help too, because for one, here at the commission, um, we can't spend more than fifteen thousand dollars without, you know, bidding and, and lots of other things, so.
But just for fifteen hundred, one thousand.
I, I understand, what I'm saying is, you know, if you came back with a limit, like, okay, so our, if you're, say, I'm going to throw out there, your power bill is usually sixteen hundred a month, maybe come back and say, okay, you know, if you raise that spending limit to X amount of dollars, you know, that would cover the majority of our routine costs. Anything that's not routine, then of course we're going to have to, you know, put through this office. But, um, but that's, you know, we have to have some kind of oversight measure on the spending, because we have concerns about the way the spending went before we were here. And, and with rules that were in place before we were here and the delegation that went on to our fire, our, our employee, our fire coordinator. And so we're trying to exercise some, some discipline over the spending, and in doing so, we impose limits, but they were arbitrary, admittedly. I mean, we, we really were not informed when we made those limits, so we need those of you who are, you know, looking at the expenses to tell us, okay, well, you know, if you raise that limit to forty-five hundred dollars, then that will cover the majority of our routine expenses and we wouldn't have any hiccups. And so, so we're open to that, it's not that we're trying to micromanage or anything, we're just trying to, you know, exercise some discipline over the spending.
No, I'd like to postpone till next week, the reimbursement for Oak Hill. Uh, is there any, any others that y'all want to postpone till next week?
I have questions on.
Okay, go ahead, John.
On, uh, the, the How Rescue Systems Incorporated? What was that?
He is on the.
Oh, Gia. Gia, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me?
Okay, what, uh, what is How Rescue Systems?
I'm looking for it right now. It was compressor service, and it was for, one was for Oak Hill, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. One was for Montgomery for six twenty-five, one was for Anstead, six twenty-five, and then they had drive time on there of five hundred and ten dollars.
What was that? All right. Okay.
Does that help?
No, one more, uh, the PACS, did you see invoices on PACS, Tom?
No, I haven't seen invoices on PACS.
Okay, PACS for, um, eleven hundred and forty-three dollars, I mean, we've got two down here that says insurance, so we know what those were for.
Yeah.
Right, one was for their insurance, and then this eleven forty-three twenty-one was their reimbursement request. It was from April of twenty-two to May of twenty-two. It has, I don't see the invoices, but on the reimbursement request on the front page, it has the garbage bill, um, the chief's pay, another garbage bill, another person that they paid, and trust bank.
So that was before the, um, that was during the last contracted, uh, amount, year, right? You said April and May of twenty-two?
Correct, yes.
Well, we probably authorized that, that was prior to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's all I had a question on.
I already have my question answered.
All right, so you just want to postpone, uh, Oak Hill's and then the, the one PACS, forty-one sixty, how y'all feel about that? And the insurance and the other one?
Oh, yeah, hey, Gia, are you still there? I forgot about that one, Tom.
I am, uh-huh.
Okay, the, uh, the PACS volunteer fire department for forty-one sixty, the Adam Tony tires.
Okay, that.
I mean.
The invoice here, and it, it just says it was eight tires. It tells me what type of tire, and it says it was, there was a mounting charge for, uh, the truck, entire disposal charge.
So you do have the invoice for that one?
I do.
Okay, all right. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, okay, okay. So Oak Hill just postponed till next week.
Okay.
I was just wondering, because those trucks don't get driven very much from PACS, and I didn't think it would need tires.
Well, they put a dry rod like one.
Well, I think there's so many years you have to replace them. I mean, I, I think there's so many years. I mean, that's what I've learned, that's why I need, and that's one of the reasons I need some of this, especially, I'm learning how the process goes about replacement and everything. Thanks, Rob, for saying that, but I thought that's what I've learned before. So that's probably what it is. It's not necessarily the miles, it's the years on them, it's crazy, but, but, yeah, so.
So, so the postponement is to three-eight, and that's just pending submission of invoices to, to support the.
Yes, and Mr. Crookshank said he should have them sometime today.
Okay, if he has them before the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we could do, yeah. Well, I motioned to approve the vouchers, invoices, including Smithers from last week, um, and will move Oak Hill's until, uh, eight. All in favor?
Okay, um, we have minutes for two seventeen. However, an email coming from Eddie's office to Amy, uh, held things up, but we do have them, so it's just pending her putting that information in.
Okay. You're ready to, okay, we can get to.
State settlements.
I'm going to approve the estate settlements.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, for the estate of Larry Ray Davis. Were you able to review those, Anthony?
I did, and, um, basically, it was a plan, it was a plan against your case, it was a plan out of, part of this plan, it was allowed part of it. It's very, it's not sure it's a genuine question, it was kind of.
Reported by his reasoning?
We've probably forgotten what they all, and all of them, but I, I didn't see any issues with it. I mean, it's, I felt that it's fine, we were reasonable, and we're based on the testimony given, so I recognize that we should improve the fiduciary commissioner's recognition.
Okay, I'm, I'm made that we approve the fiduciary commissioner's recommendations, the estate of Larry Ray Davis.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye. Uh, Gia, are you still there?
Yes, yes.
I, I just have a question, and, and maybe, uh, Commissioner Lees isn't better, wouldn't mind doing this, but can you separate the fire payments from the other payments on a separate sheet? And that way, until Commissioner Lees has a time, chance to go through them, that way it won't hold up the other invoices that need to be paid?
Sure.
I think that might get a little bit more efficient.
That's a good idea, I like it.
Ruth?
I'm fine with it as it is, but I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Gia.
Yeah, well, oh, okay, sorry, I was still going with Ruth. That's right, we do have nine fifteen. Oh, Rob, did you want to talk about that? The, the, the one vehicle, yeah, that, uh, we know that would be replaced, that with the car crash.
Okay, so the one, all that's part was scheduled, and we got reimbursed the last, the other one, like, on the insurance side. But they are just twenty-one hundred dollars. But until they tend to, right?
I was able to find an eagle, I was able to take a skirt crew, we could bet we'd be, to get it forward. See, if they don't give them two or three, they could skirt two for us, like, a haul four, and I was looking for city, we had used this dinner before. I think we bought maybe ten when we ordered it, twenty-four over there. He has two for us, and he'll, for them. I think they're delivering everybody else's borrow, where I was accidentally, and, uh, we were waiting on to see what happened here, for us as well. Uh, he's able to have, he has a couple more, they had ten for us, if we need them, they're going to home before then.
Well, I got a suggestion. Well, I, I was, I was going to, I'd explain it that later, that, what I was going to suggest to the commission is go ahead and purchase two, just in case the other one, the, the two that's got held. And then we're going to discuss later today about the other two. I've already got a, I put something together to show how many miles is on every, that you put on every vehicle since twenty, two thousand and nine. And I averaged all the miles at, yeah, two thousand and nine, averaged the miles out that each vehicle was used a year. And I come up with how many vehicles that I think the commission should buy the department, not by the miles y'all use, and how many deputies you have on the road. Now, whether I'm right or not, I used all the last thirteen years statistics to show when that vehicle should be replaced and how many miles.
And we are, we have asked Ruth to start budgeting annually, so we can buy a certain number of new vehicles per year, yeah, rather than you guys.
But, but with that said, I don't know how long we're going to keep them up.
Well, we're going to talk about it this, this evening, the budget, I'm sure.
Well, he means like a ten, ten.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to talk about, but I, I want to make a suggestion to the commission to go ahead and get to two.
Let me see here, the, the two, we've talked about getting that two additional, and that might be if we don't act that quickly, that might be.
You're not going to get two additional right now, that would be the next budget year.
We're talking about two right now.
Okay.
Right, but two, yeah, yeah.
You have.
I'm just going, no, 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 we're, we're, what I'm suggesting is, is I put now, put together something to show the commissioners how many miles you put on these vehicles in a ten-year span each year, one vehicle, to come up with a, well, I already have a, a number that should be compared to how many officers you have on the road, compared to the miles you put on there when it should be replaced. Whether they agree with me or not, that's, I don't know. But I've put something together, so each year, we're going to be obligated to that many vehicles, because of the miles you put on and the time it should be replaced.
You're saying, okay, then, for a year, how many vehicles?
Well, and I'll show you when I, I bring it out exactly how I come up with it. I've already got it laid out in the spreadsheet.
The price of these two vehicles were forty-five even, which that's not being out there, without them, both of them, thousand and four hundred.
I'm going to make a motion to approve two vehicles.
Are you serious about that question?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll make a motion to approve two vehicles for law enforcement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
And really ask who feels that. I tried to tell the jail bill that way. Without a big thing.
We got money, grand people.
Well, the, the counties will be happy if they started less than pay the jail bill.
Yeah, there's a real argument.
All right. Ruth, you want to, so if we got that taken care of, you want to, uh?
Well, the next thing is the city of Oak Hill. Let's do that, get out of here. And that's just.
Um, the city of Oak Hill has asked to hold their elections with the county. And we, we were discussing this a little bit in our staff meeting, just, just the logistics of it, so it, it, I mean, it makes sense to me, I don't see why we shouldn't do it. Is there any weird thing that's going to happen within the district precincts that are in Oak Hill, Michelle, that where you've got an Oak Hill city election for people who are voting in a precinct?
Same, I can't hear for the minutes.
What? Okay, um, lawyers, go to the hallway. So the question is, if, if we have two, two citizens in the Oak Hill area who vote in the same precinct, one within the city limits, one without, outside the city limits, how are you guys going to manage the voting machines in that precinct to make sure that, you know, only the citizens of City of Oak Hill are voting in the Oak Hill election?
All right, so what we do is, we would eventually have to separate out all the out, county, out of city people, out of the precinct. Um, I just did the math, there was about eleven hundred people, and so that would be a fact, that would be a fact. Um, it's not so that difficult, we have three years to do, but basically, my plan right now is that there's two, there's two precincts, those people will go into separate precincts. Um, then the rest of those precincts, the other seven within city limits, we would make a new precinct of just the out-of-city people that are inside our current precinct, not newer. Um, within that, I would probably combine two of the Oak Hill precincts, city precincts, and one, so our total number of precincts would stay the same. That's our point, aren't we?
Okay, so there, so there's a, a fix.
Yeah, it's not, it's not too difficult, and it, other than that, work is in front of us. I mean, it's hard putting their stuff on the ballot, and everything, we, I mean, that's the same amount of work, three, three more things left to prove.
Yeah, that's the only thing I think we, within this conversation, John told.
You guys have any other questions?
It's the, it's going to happen in twenty twenty-six then, not twenty twenty-four? Okay, and with two house districts and two senate districts, that's the only municipality that has that in accounting.
Yeah. So, yeah, basically, all the people in thirteen, uh, who are outside of city limits to vote. All the people in twenty-nine, the minority that are outside of the limits to vote, fourteen. And then all the rest of them are inside, the little, the little whole pieces and parts of people that are inside of Oak Hill, that if one of them part of Oak Hill, they'll have a new precinct. Most likely, they voted and insured, that's what my finish of thought is.
Okay, yeah, because when, if they pass that, where all the municipalities do it, Oak Hill was the only one that was really.
Yeah, it's, it's a war, I mean, there's, we'll have to change up, it's, it was the most conflict.
I'm going to approve the request.
Second, all in favor?
John?
He, he said.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. It's really quiet. Yeah.
Thank you, good to see y'all again.
Yeah, good luck on the puzzle pieces, Michelle.
Draw all the people out.
Good job, Ruth.
So the next thing is that parking contract with Palm Rest, and Anthony went over and shared his thoughts, we do a three parking spots behind.
On my office, and kind of off to the side.
Anybody have any?
What was it, I'm sorry.
It's parking spots behind the old defensive wall. The contract.
The contract, well, I agree with Anthony, I thought it was awfully long, but of course, we're lawyers, so, you know, let me forgive Tom, let me forgive Tom that, um, I do think we ought to push back about the arbitration, what, what arbitration clause? Attorney's fee. For, for representing himself, per se? Yeah. So, was I per se? So, um, I, I say, you know, we approve the contract pending that change, if Tom agrees to the change. And that way, we don't have to put it back on again.
Yeah, a second, a second, all in favor? One more, Ruth, you think?
Yeah, that's Kevin's, uh, grant, drawdown. It's just to get reimbursed for him.
There's no match, there's nothing to do with that, right?
No, I mean, we've already paid it, this is from twenty twenty, that's how far behind we are.
Second, all in favor? You want to try one more?
What's next? RFP, the logo. I would say let's go to the west.
Okay.
Our, here's that agreement. And he just needs to sign it, we approve. And he just needs to sign it. We approved it as last week. She said they also have an appreciation.
You're welcome.
I know, my sig, my signature's terrible on that.
No.
That's all we need to have somebody, maybe Michelle.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll have to give that to Michelle if you don't.
Okay.
Has how they were stored those machines.
Put it on the record. Yeah.
But with a, all, we ready for Wes?
Yeah, so we're ready for Wes.
All the settlements.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there, the standards of an agreement, right, you guys look at, they vary each other, which I would, uh, dare say is collusion on the part, part of the defense council, but the, there's no objection or glaring concerns about any of the settlement agreements or the waiver and the indemnity clauses. The only thing is just what we previously noted. I mean, these things are drafted abroad, um, and it's just something to note, uh, people would be aware of, but um, anything tangentially related to these claims won't be probably, um, that's just part of these rules. So, um, you guys have the list, I think, but these are the improved bypass, Rhonda, the pharmacy, and then involved agreements. Um, and again, these are pharmacies, so they fall under my parallel and our, um, A G's part of the distributaries. So, any questions, commission?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either. He's a lawyer.
Do we need to, do we need to approve it now? Or, or sign some release forms? Is that what we need to do?
We should have to.
Okay.
Yeah, I motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Wes. Uh, don't we?
Or print, okay. Oh, oh, hey, Wes, Wes, hold on. Let me take a small break. It's a five minute small break. Let's call the meeting back to order and, uh, discuss nine forty-five with the earmark focus. The, uh, I think one of our focuses will run sixty. And the letter we sent to, uh, all the representatives, is there anything else that the commission wants to, uh, discuss on earmarks?
I've said several things and now I have to go back and look. I thought about.
Yeah, these here. Some of these here.
Are these the recommended ones here?
I think.
I wondered if we couldn't try to slip Dunesboro Bridge in there again, um.
Dunesboro.
Um, another was. Does anybody remember Ruth or Amy when I was giving you ideas about?
St. Knoll Falls, um, PSD and the flooding.
Yeah, the flooding, um, see if we can get some help reconstituting that infrastructure up Hamilton, up to the prison because of the, that was damaged through the floods. That was one I thought we should, because I know they have estimates on it, so it would be a one and done kind of thing and it'd be to restore service to people who had it and also to deal with a serious, um, you know, health hazard with all that sewage flowing off of the mountain.
Okay, now, on the last call that I was on for that, the prison sewage is being held back. The sewage flowing is from the citizens that don't have the sewer lines that live down there in the hall.
Never had it.
No, they had it, but it was washed out. Um, also, it's going to take a long amount of time to get everything restored back to normal. Because the way that the law is written, if there's any piping left in the creek, they have to go back and reuse that piping. And then put in new where it's been totally destroyed. So it may go in and out of the creek in multiple places. They'll have to come up with a percentage that is still usable and remove that percentage from the amount of the grant that they're receiving.
Inefficient.
Things crazy. That's, that's how our legal system is set up with, uh, and government together. So it, uh, it was very. Thank you, sir.
So we talked about, we talked about, uh, trying to get earmarked for the flood, all the flooded areas.
I think for their match to help them with the finances because they have to come up with, I think it was three point six million dollars.
Yeah, it was, it was bad. You know, something that will help them with the batch to get that infrastructure repaired.
Is there anything in PACS too? Is there anything?
Uh, no.
Um, everything else in PACS was fine.
Everything in PACS was okay for now. Uh, and that's where Angela and I are going to the meeting to discuss that creek cleanup with them again. Yes, we're talking about earmarks for Kenelton Haller.
Yeah, I'm reading this.
Now, that may be also one of the letters coming from region four. Oh, yeah, Leslie, you want to?
Leslie, first, can we start with Knoll Falls? Do you have any comments on that?
Actually, I did. I had my hand raised, but I know. Sometimes it's hard to.
Listen, Wilbur was taking a nap. Now he's awake.
Well, I thought about turning my video on and jumping up and down and, you know, making the scene so you all could see me, but. Um, so on Knoll Falls, we, what we have done with, with that project is we have submitted it to the Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council. Because it needs to go there for approval first, plus we're seeking funding for the percentage that FEMA will not pay. Because FEMA is a, has a cost share. It's typically seventy-five percent federal and twenty-five percent non-federal. Um, so FEMA is currently reviewing, um, that project now. They are, uh, we, we have some sites, visits, site inspections scheduled during the month of March. There's three of them actually due to the magnitude of the damages. Um, and in addition, there are some ways that FEMA may be able to use their mitigation funds to move those lines out of the creek. So this is all a work in progress. We are looking at other ways to be able to fund the cost share for the project. And the project will be reviewed at the Infrastructure Council the end of the month. So is that, does that answer you on Knoll Falls?
Well, do we have, I mean, for that twenty-five percent match, so we're going to the IDC to ask for that twenty-five percent match once FEMA finishes its evaluation of the cost or?
Typically, your twenty-five percent match has always come from the governor's contingency fund.
Okay, and since it went to the do it for baby dog, I wonder if we have any options?
That's a, a question unfortunately we can't answer at that point, but typically that's the way that, that it goes is that FEMA picks up seventy-five percent and then there's a, the state usually picks up the twenty-five percent non-federal share.
Okay, so do we have any dollar amounts attached to what we think it'll be?
We, we do roughly have some dollar amounts, but again, those are dependent on FEMA. So Knoll Falls PSD's engineer prepared cost estimates. And he prepared several based on the way that FEMA wanted to see things. Once FEMA does their site inspections in the month of March, then they will start determining how they can mitigate damages, what the cost to fix it is. And then they will, uh, have their own cost estimate. And of course, their cost estimate will be the one that we have to go by. But right now we're looking at somewhere around, based on the engineer's cost estimates, fifteen million dollars for all the repairs that were, uh, caused by the flooding in Knoll Falls PSD system. Do y'all have any other questions?
Any more questions?
Not on, not on that one. Right now.
Leslie, have they determined the amount of piping that can still be used?
And that will be done, that will be done during the site inspections.
Okay.
What other questions do you have for me?
I don't have any. Ms. Taylor, John, do you have any? We will, but not on this one anymore, I don't think. We'll have more questions, so please don't go away.
Okay.
I'm going to read a lot more time than we could decide.
You talking about the support letters or the?
The support letters.
Okay, well, that's on six, that's on Ruth's.
Yes.
I thought we were just going to approve these, uh, support letters again. Were they, you going to use them as earmarks?
That's what they're actually supporting for. That's what they, for the earmark. Those would be separate.
Okay, okay.
Like what you guys submit would be separate.
And that's.
From the support letters? On what they're submitting. Right, those are just support letters for what region four has determined will be their projects to submit. Well, like I'm, I'm looking at one and I see some things where facts might, additional facts in my brain might help support this, the letter.
Start by Anstead Extension, Pax Willis Branch and, and Bee Branch Sewer. Start that, uh, there's two different ones, ones for okay, the Anstead, I don't even see a figure, but I know what that's, we know about that. We all know about all these, but figures. The Pax Willis Branch, one of them's from one point seven eight, one's for one point two. Then a new heaven, New Haven PSD has two of them. Uh, for, uh, White Road Water Extension for four point nine. New Haven PSD.
Armstrong Creek was another one I think I emailed about because of all the problems it's having. Like it's about to have a failure. Major failure over there, but they, they won't have water. There's several things.
Oh, we need a support letter for that one too, yeah.
We do have information, you know, about what it's supposed to fix it and it got held up. Leslie, what are your thoughts on putting in for Armstrong Creek?
Um, time wise, that may not be a good choice because these earmark requests, of course, won't get, we won't know the determination or the outcome of these until we have a federal budget, which should be by October first. But only three times in the last forty-two years has that happened. Um, Armstrong's needs are immediate. Um, and by the, so let's just assume that we have a federal budget on October first and Armstrong will be included. It's twelve to eighteen months before those funds are available. And by, by then Armstrong's system may have already failed. Um, but on a side note, for Armstrong, we are working on some other avenues to try to find some funding to help at least either their tank or their lines.
The rest of these.
On Towne Pax, those water mains, that water supplied by Bethley or supplies water to Bethley?
It is, uh, the Towne Pax buys their water from Bethley.
Leslie, we don't have one for White Oak PSD?
No, we don't, do not have one for White Oak PSD.
Hey, I have a question. Isn't this going to be done by them? Is it just a weapon to support that?
I, I guess. I know, that's why I mentioned it. It was, uh, when I see that one.
That's the very first one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because it didn't have a figure on it.
No.
Yeah. That's, that even mentioned sixty, but they got. When is that, that information we got on this?
We're just writing to support that project.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make.
But I think that, yeah, and I had, I mean, I feel like there's more information we can put in that letter that was.
Yeah, probably.
That was fattened up. The other ones looked fine to me, other than a couple of the grammar issues. I don't want to get back on reappraisal. So I'm, I'm fine with moving forward on all of them except the Towne Anstead one, and I can take a hack at it and finish editing it for the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Because we have all this language. We've already written it.
Yeah, we've already.
Yeah, so I think we can just take some of our, just, like, I think it would be better bolstered by the, like, adding the percentage of increase in the visitors. Um, pointing out that that entire area over there doesn't have wastewater infrastructure. Um, which, you know, is, is a deterrent to development in, in really some of the only areas we have left, um, to develop here. Those were some of the things that came, came into my mind and then a couple of those went through and changed, but.
Okay, so we're working on.
number five on Roos and the earmark focus?
I think it's what Ms. Taylor was talking about, using the, the number five for earmarks also.
Okay.
I think, is that right, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I mean, I thought, weren't these, Leslie, weren't these the projects that you guys recommended for earmarks?
Yeah, there were several projects there that we did send descriptions on for earmarks that we'll be submitting.
Leslie, if you had to prioritize these for Fayette County, which is something we're gonna have to do in, in our letter, how would you prioritize, like, which ones are, you know, based on how you guys would go about putting forward, like, for people who may be about to lose water services or people who've never had water, things like that?
Well, it, in all fairness, we try to look at all of our projects the same. So we, we try not to prioritize any one over the other when we're looking at projects like that. Of course, people who have, who've never had water or wastewater are very important. Folks that have systems that are failing, like down at Armstrong, those folks are really important, but to sit and put a priority, to, to put them in priority order would be really difficult.
I guess that's what we're gonna have to do, because we really should. You know, if we're submitting earmarks and we're doing support, we should say, you know, which, obviously, we know that we're, you know, our biggest priority is that one area of development, but also, like, you know, I want to point out, we have one here from, you know, we've got Golly Bridge wanting demolition of a former high school, and then we've got Smithers wants congressionally directed spending for the developed Longacre. Couple of comments on those, these, all these others are with regard to water and sewer, which is, to me, a more pressing issue, but if the funding comes out of different pockets, though, with the feds, then there's no reason we shouldn't, you know, it's say, you know, everything else is water and sewer funding, and then we've got bridge funding. We wouldn't not ask for the bridge because, you know, that's a different pot of money. So that's one thing that we need to figure out is if, you know, the demolition of high school and or if it's all out of the same congressional directed spending pot, which is what I think it is. On the thing about Longacre, I just wanted to comment that the State Economic Development Office has been down the Longacre and Smithers a few times, and did not seem to feel like it was something that was gonna be easy to develop, like, they saw problems, you remember the comments they were making when we had the meeting? Up there, that's the area in Smithers they were talking about, when they were talking about Longacre with Jenna Belcher and
Okay, yeah.
Had up there, so, they have been scoping out Longacre Bottom, but they, they seemed to think that it was not going to be a priority or something that would be easy to develop.
So, on, on your comment about prioritization, so multiple, not, not just one entity in the county, the funding is not just limited to one or two entities in the county, each one is looked at on their own merit. Each project submitted or each congressionally directed spending request that is submitted is looked at on its own merit. So, a, and the other thing that I wanted to mention is there are different agencies that participate in congressionally directed spending, so USDA might have a, a certain pot of money, Homeland Security, Housing and Urban Development, EPA, Water and Wastewater Infrastructure, so there's a lot of different subcategories or subcommittees that are involved in these funding, these earmark requests, and if you'd like, I can forward you some information that shows all the different subcategories that projects may apply for.
So you're saying, so you're saying we shouldn't prioritize them, we just should request the letters separately is fine, not prioritize them?
Yeah, you don't have to prioritize them because each project is judged on its own merit, not based on the county in which it's in.
Well, I, no, I, I disagree with you, Leslie, and the reason is Fayette County is, no, I'm not worried about, you know, them saying no to three Fayette County projects versus, you know, putting another one in another county or something. What, what I'm saying is, with regard to the Fayette County Commission, if we got our brothers, what are our priorities for the things that every, you know, the earmarks? If Fayette County only gets a certain number of infrastructure dollars, where does the Fayette County Commission think those dollars are best invested? I do think we have a responsibility to, to do that because we have the view countywide of, of where we want, not, not, not submit these because, you know, we don't want to say we'd like to have all six of our projects funded, but just, you know, in our minds, you know, based on our development, our comprehensive plan, and, and our priorities, these are the, these are the areas that we think, you know, these are the projects, our priority for these projects. And that's, that's my view on it. You know, I think that, you know, otherwise, I mean, how do they know, for example, if when the governor decided he was going to allocate money to improve a small fishing road at Babcock State Park as opposed to fix Keller Avenue in Fayetteville? You know, you know what I mean, like, you know, if somebody had come to us and said, you know, you think we need this little used road at Babcock State Park paved more than we need, you know, the tram at Hawks Nest fixed?
Or water and sewer.
Or water and sewer? I mean, our answer would be, no. You know, you know, so in this case, we are going to be writing them, and I do think, you know, we ought to reference anything that we've supported and say, you know, what our priority order is for those things.
What we would suggest is what you, when, when you determine what your top priority is, you may put a paragraph in, in the support letter that says, you know, this project is, is the top priority for the Fayette County Commission to, to let anyone know that's reviewing those that that is a, a priority for the county.
I'm talking about in our letter to them, where we say, you know, these are, you know, we've said support letters, letters in support of these projects and
They're most separate than
Here is our priority, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Here is our priority. These are our priorities as a, as a commission based on our strategic plan and
Okay, so what you're talking about is, go ahead and do the support letter separately and then do one support letter for the commission on what they feel the priority should be.
I thought we did that last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that that's a game distraction issue.
Yeah.
We did it last year, and, and now we've got some recognition for the fact that we've stuck to our, you know, we prioritize, we're not just throwing stuff up to see if it'll stick. Now, we are throwing stuff up to see if it'll stick, but we're also saying, you know, if only two things get to stick instead of six.
These are, what's the first two to be? I found your email was also internet, the bridge and water and sewer.
Yeah, the broadband was the other one.
Yeah, the broadband. Yeah.
So broad.
So we can actually do the same letter and, and update it?
Pretty much.
Yeah, we, yeah.
And we can say our, our priorities still remain, remain consistent from last year, thank, thanking for the investment in the Anstead sewer upgrade, which will facilitate these other upgrades, Route 60.
Yeah.
And, and then go, you know, just say these, these remain our top priorities, we also commit these other issues based on, did we decide to submit anything for Canal Falls or not? You know, we like that.
I think we still need some more numbers on Canal Falls.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be too, Leslie, what's the timeframe, like, how long do you think it's going to take? I know FEMA's got their site inspections in March, but I'm just wondering if that's not something we should put on our priority list for next year if Canal Falls is still, you know, I'm, I'm assuming since West Virginia American Water doesn't want to get in the wastewater business, that Canal Falls is still gonna have that responsibility, no matter what the PSC does.
So are you talking about Canal Falls, the flooding issue?
Yeah.
Again, I'll, I'll tell you the same thing I told you about Armstrong, you know, Canal Falls has an immediate need to fix, and assuming that we wrote an earmark for that and sent it in, and it was award, there was a budget in, in place by October 1st, and that was included, then it's going to be twelve to eighteen months before we have that money. So, we may have to look at other sources because once there's a cost estimate determined by FEMA, and we're working with the state to find the, the match for the federal dollars, you know, the, the project will get underway. It's still a couple of years out from completion, absolutely.
So there's a different pot to draw from then too, basically, emergency money.
Well, if it's still there, it was depleted, I mean, I don't know if they reconstituted it or not.
But it would be there this beginning of this, this next
I believe that the governor has a separate pot of money for these type of projects, projects that we received congressionally directed spending for in the last cycle, we've been able to request our twenty percent match from the governor's office and have been very successful in getting that money.
Okay.
He has, I thought part of that money was already used, like, seven hundred and some million dollars was already redirected to other accounts, and it left like three hundred million to do projects with.
Anyway, it sounds like this isn't the year to ask for money for Canal Falls, regardless.
Or Armstrong Creek.
Or Armstrong Creek.
It's emergency money, they're, they're, they're first.
Okay. And then the other question was whether there was anything, this is for us, we might be able to request help with the park.
So do we want to put a park in there also and just update deals and put it on the next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. Let's do that, because I can have my changes ready by the eighth.
I knew that's what you
Just the one.
Just the one.
Okay, so what about, are you guys going to request stuff because it's a, it's an application, not just a letter? But it's an entire application process online?
And and we have to get support letters as well from other places. Yes, and those are due March 10th and March 12th.
Yes. Well, we are doing that, possibly doing that one infrastructure request, if that's if we end up building all this sort of new land.
Mm-hmm.
And then yeah, the approval.
Yeah. Well, we put all that in there, I mean, it has to be done, what you say, by the 12th, 10th and the 12th?
10th and the 12th, I believe Senator Capito is the 10th and Senator Manchin is the 12th.
Of March?
Yes.
Yeah, next week, yeah. That don't give us much time, really.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can, I can, during a break or during executive session, I can make the changes to this one letter, if I had a soft copy of it. The others are good to go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can approve all of them, but which one you talked about?
The one about Town of Anstead Extension, yeah.
Yeah.
We just want to beef that one up a little bit, Leslie.
Okay. Just as soon as they're ready, you can email them to me?
Do we have the soft copy of?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get to you.
Okay.
Send it to that Fayette Commission Taylor, because I haven't sent it my email on the line.
I may have to do
Maybe you'll receive it today, maybe you'll receive it tomorrow. So we're gonna approve all these support letters, is what, and then you're gonna fix the other one?
Yeah, I'm just gonna beef it up a little bit. I knew that we approved all of the support letters with the exception of the Town of Anstead for Region Four.
Second, all in favor?
Is that, is number six the same one, is the Smithers one we saw in there?
It's in here.
So it was in, I thought it was in the group we just, that wasn't it, the Region One? Okay, so, all right, well, I, I moved that we approved that request too.
Second, all in favor? So you want to do the logo real quick? Oh, okay, yeah, I'm going to be there second now. Okay, I want to make, you got the minutes there, John? Is it the, 217?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes from 217.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the
Logo.
Logo, yeah. I haven't been dealing with the logo.
Well, I think the only thing I was right on, and we did that one was your plan.
All right.
I left it highlighted on the draft, the only other thing that changed from the last one was we took out the website information and we changed the dates.
Good to go then.
Was that my?
I believe so, I mean, there's some other, there's some other things.
I think it's, if they approve it today, I think my dates are correct, but I'll double check those before it goes out.
But the actual, the language itself, fine.
9/17/29. If you didn't commission, I have a problem with it, I made a motion to approve pending the dates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The dates look like they're right based on my publication, I'll get the paper next week.
Now I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Seek legal counsel on the Voice Counsel of America.
Yeah, they've been had a say. Our partnership with the Voice Counsel of America. Recede in the meeting and come out of executive session and discussion, there was no decisions made.
No decisions made on during law. No decisions made in executive session, we just received legal advice on our continuing discussions with partnering with the Voice Counsel of America.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, I'm still learning.
You're welcome. And then the budget work session is there.
Yeah, let's go. Ruth, you want to come up for it?
This is a part of the public meeting, and they're already
Yeah. So you want to make a motion adjourn in this?
Yeah.
Discuss this.
Oh, first I want to make a motion that go ahead and approve the Town of Anstead wastewater extension Region Four support letter, because we did get those changes made while we were in executive session.
Second.
I made them.
All in favor?
Aye. And didn't we get those about invoices from, we, did you have yet?
I haven't looked at all of them.
Okay, then we'll just wait on that. So that is it, motion to adjourn.
Second.